Good afternoon. I would like to call to order our special school committee meeting on Thursday, May 5th, at 3:00 PM in the LG1 at Tucksbury Memorial High School. I would like to first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Bea Joanie Smith, if you'd start it.
(inaudible)
Thank you. In our announcement, the May 5th, 2022 special school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or youtube.com/tucksburyTV. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording today's meeting to please identify themselves. Okay? And seeing no one, I'd like to move on. So, welcome and thank you to the residents and attendants today. 3:00 PM is not an easy time for many people to attend, so thank you for making the time to be here. Thank you to Tucksbury Telemedia for their flexibility over the past two weeks in accommodating our meetings, especially around town meetings. The purpose of this meeting is to deliberate and then vote for who we each believe is the best candidate to be appointed to the superintendent of the Tucksbury Public Schools. We're fortunate to have four strong educational leaders that were brought forward by the screening committee. I'd like to again thank them for their efforts on the front end to get us to this place. I am proud of our committee and of our work. I'm confident that this committee recognizes the importance and the levity of this decision, as it is our most important work as school committee members. After this vital appointment today, I am assured and I am hopeful that we will all support the superintendent that will be tasked with leading our district. I would like to share a bit about the process that we followed. With the help of Mrs. Dorothy Presser and the MASC, I thank Mrs. Presser for your support and your assistance. We spent several hours in person at onsite visits in each of the candidates' districts. We were graciously hosted and given the opportunity to interact with several stakeholders in their schools and in their community. We attended meet and greets with the candidates that were open to the community here in Tucksbury. It was much appreciated that each of the four candidates spent full 12-hour days in our schools and with our committee. We held individual interviews that are available for the public to view. And time was dedicated to our meetings and we held special meetings that were dedicated to this process. I recognize that my committee members for their work in making the sacrifices that they did so that we could be informed and exposed to the candidates that have informed us in making the best decision for the students in the district. Finally, our business manager, Dave Libby, Peter, our courier, Gail Johnson, our school committee secretary, we thank you all for your time and effort in helping us as well. At this time, I'd like to open to discussion to the committee to share what informs your choice and who the candidate is that you believe is the best person to lead our district in the role of superintendent. So I'd like to start with you, Mr. Russo.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the introduction. And I just, I guess maybe I'd like to start by just saying what a first month of the school committee, being on the school committee. And before I sort of get to the meat a little bit, I'd just like to acknowledge a few people. First, the screening committee, as my colleague stated, I think this committee put in tireless hours putting questions together, reading resumes, applications, interviewing candidates, having candid discussions with one another and as a committee, and doing this all after yourselves would put in a full day's work at your actual jobs to bring us four outstanding finalists. An exhaustive process in a quick period of time, to say the least. But you all did your role very well, and it's worth being noted what extremely important work you have contributed to this process. I'd like to say a big kudos to all the students, teachers, staff, administration, and parents within the community that came out to meet and welcome each of the four finalists to our district, really asked some tough questions, get to know each of them better, and get to form your own thoughts of who they think would be the best choice for the role of superintendent. And then there are the four finalists themselves, Brent Conway, Darcy Fernandez, Brenda Regan, and Nan Murphy. They've all put countless hours of research into this process to see if Tucksbury was even a district worth applying to, and then the process of spending time in our district, hosting the school committee in their respective districts, answering questions from all stakeholders and on a variety of topics. Some would say that's the role of a superintendent. I say it was just truly a remarkable effort, and we appreciate all the time and energy that you poured into this process. And then there are my colleagues up here that we sit before you. I can wholeheartedly say without a shadow of a doubt that no one up here took this charge lightly. What a lot of people don't realize is that this is the biggest thing, as Madam Chair pointed out, that the school committee does, is hire and terminate the superintendent. So this very well could be the biggest decision that any of the five of us will make during our tenure of the school committee. The amount of time that each one of us dedicated to this process from the moment finalists were named is quite extraordinary. The 13-hour-long days between site visits, meet and greets, only to close it with interviews at the end of the day, the sacrifices they've made with our jobs and families, and listening to stakeholders in the countless hours, feedback forms, really trying to put all of it together, all to arrive at this point today. It truly was a Herculean effort from all people involved, and I commend our district, our community, and our school committee on a job well done. So, I guess let me move on to my thoughts. We really did have four tremendous candidates, and this decision did not come easy to me personally. After one interview, I felt strongly about one candidate, only to do a site visit and feel really strongly about another candidate. It was truly a ride of emotions and one that I personally took very seriously. All of these candidates are certainly qualified on paper, and many of them answered our interview questions very similarly, and at all the site visits, you did begin to hear a lot of the same things. So how do you differentiate? My experience in my professional career in having hired dozens of people, both direct and indirect reports, over the last dozen years or so, has given me the skill set, I believe, to be able to sift through candidates' responses and to ultimately get to who I feel is the best candidate for the role of superintendent. I do believe that our next superintendent has to possess the traits of building trust, being transparent, being collaborative, and open-minded. And I personally believe that Brenda Regan possesses the ability to be all of those things the greatest for our district right now. With the last two years being as rocky as they have been, not just in Tucksbury, but really everywhere across the state of Massachusetts due to the pandemic, it is time to get back to the educational roots of our district now. Because our children so desperately need that, and I feel that Ms. Regan is in the best position to be able to do that for us, being the candidate who knows our district inside and out. I personally think Ms. Regan is committed to our district, as she's been a lifelong resident of our town and grown through the ranks of our district. From my standpoint, she bleeds Tucksbury. There may be folks within our community that feel it is time for a change overall, and what I would say to them is Ms. Regan is never one to shy away from conflict or professional debate, but stakeholders have to be willing participants to have sometimes the toughest of dialogues and conversations. And one thing that I know beyond a shadow of a doubt is that she will always try to work with the right stakeholders to do what is best for our children. She is the innovator of our district. Listening and watching 20 students last week pour into this room here and talk about how Ms. Regan has made an impact on their education was truly eye-opening for me personally. So fellow committee members, I'll close with, this is solely my opinion as one of five of us, and will unequivocally support whatever the majority of the committee decides.
Thank you. Ms. Bea Joanie Smith?
All right. So I am not going to repeat a lot of what Rich said, just so that we don't have to go through a lot of that. But it was a grueling process. It was exhausting, and I too commend the districts who let us in, let us sit through and sit in their rooms, take the time to get to know their candidate, and make the most informed decision. So it was my goal to identify the most qualified superintendent that is also the best fit for our thriving, growing, but transforming school community. Each candidate addressed similar approaches to handling some of the hot-button topics, including social-emotional learning, professional development time, and repairing and strengthening some of the fractured relationships that exist across multiple stakeholders within our community. Another important topic parents often brought up for children in this district in the younger grades was identifying and addressing some of the gaps in standards across the district in our elementary school classrooms. To oversimplify it, I was looking for someone who's kind, honest, approachable, and exceptional communicator, and always willing to do what's right and in the best interest of the children. When looking at these qualities, I did come up with two candidates who I believe met these standards, and that was Brenda Regan and Brent Conway. With that said, I think that one of them can and will take our district to the next level and forge a great working relationship with our entire community, and that is Brent Conway. It is my hope that my authenticity with making this decision and this choice is clear to our community, and that folks understand really just how challenging this process was and how grueling this decision is, like my colleague here said. It's a testament to the amazing work our search committee did at presenting such qualified candidates for the school committee to choose from, as they surely did not make this decision easy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to now ask Mr. Parsons if he has some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate what my colleagues are saying, lots of thanks to the members to my left, plenty of thanks to everyone in the community who got involved in the process. A lot of time and a lot of sacrifice from a lot of different stakeholders in this town went into this process. And I can confidently say, regardless of what the decision is made here tonight, every single person at this table is coming to who they want to be a superintendent independently, on their own, and autonomously. I know the community wants change. I've preached change, but before we deliberate further, I just want to acknowledge that. Change has already happened. If you look at the composition of this committee, the most veteran person here is Keith Sullivan. Other than that, we are all relatively new here. So there is no institutional history guiding this decision. This is the fresh slate and the change that I think Tucksbury has been wanting for. It's already here. That said, whoever is selected tonight or today, I know that this committee is going to unanimously support them in every way possible. My epiphany through this whole process is it's not entirely the superintendent that sets the tone for our schools. It is the town that sets the tone for our schools, and it is this committee that does. And this committee works too hard and puts too much passion into what we do to lead this town astray and our schools astray. This process has been paradigm-changing. I thought I knew schools pretty well, but I have learned things that I'm fortunate to be able to see as an educator, and I'm not going to look at schools the same again. And this process is humbling. You have to see the best of a bunch of other districts. You have to confront what our own district isn't doing well, and I think I can speak on behalf of everyone here, we have heard from everyone. Everyone. And all that feedback has been received, and it's taken seriously. I'm going to say my decision, and then I am going to explain it. I am going to support Brenda Regan as superintendent of Tucksbury Schools. And I can assure you, this is authentic. My chips are all in here, and I'm certainly not making this decision thinking a couple years down the road during reelection. And it was hard to come to this decision, and I had to confront a lot of my own personal biases and thinkings to do so. It's been a long two years in schools, especially in Tucksbury. There has been enough change, in my opinion, to make our district move forward. We do need some degree of stability, and I want to value that above anything else at this moment. For the first time in two years going into the next school year, we're going to have some stability for the first time. No one of the candidates can say that they have been a member of this community for as long as Brenda. What really struck out to me during her interview was she's not going to feel, because she's not going to feel the community that she has been a part of, and I believe her when I say that. The deficits, debt she might bring to the table, they're all out there. There's not a person in this room or watching this process that doesn't know what we need to do to be better. We need to continue our work in special education. There's a lot we need to do there, and a lot of good work has been happening there. Regarding our teachers, there is a desperate need to restore relationships. We do need to build trust. We do need more collaboration among staff, and teachers need to be more involved in the process of making our schools better. Teachers need to say, I ran on that, and I ran on teachers and other people who haven't been heard to be heard, and I'm going to stand by that. That's not changing. I don't think it would be wise of the town to start with someone new who we might not necessarily know as well as Brenda. We know Brenda, works and all, and I would rather work with someone who was part of all that conflict and tension to resolve it than start fresh with something that's not guaranteed. And by God, I'm not allowing Brenda to feel me, this committee, these students, feeling these leaders and staff. And I'm going to support her in whatever challenges she's going to face, and I think we all know what those are going to be. I really value that we unify this town for our schools, for our children, for our families. And part of that is admitting some fault and moving on and moving forward with people. I need to act what I speak and practice what I preach, and this is my step towards that. And I really do encourage all stakeholders to take that chance with me. That said, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board, I am going to recommend a two-year contract for Ms. Regan if she is selected. But I, at the end of the day, my gut can't not give her the opportunity to act out her vision and not have to answer to someone above her. And that's my decision.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I really couldn't agree with you more of our assessments. We learned a lot through the process. Thank you to the screening committee. But one thing is I've engaged in some self-reflection. I don't think we recognize good, quality people. These two candidates to the left ran knowing, knowing they were going to have to do this. They didn't just say it, they went out in every second, site visits, put their jobs aside, someone flew home from Florida. So I just, I can't, I am so encouraged in the direction of the school committee. I'm a transparent person. I love this job. I said it a month ago, I'll say it again. These jobs aren't meant to be forever. I think we have the future of a wonderful school committee here in a great and outstanding makeup. Also, I can reflect and wonder, maybe I could have done things different. Maybe I could have done things better to put us in a better place, and I have no problems taking ownership in that. But one thing I wouldn't do different, I would not want Brenda Regan not by my side. She is a wonderful, caring, loving person who cares more about this community and our kids than anyone I've ever met. My daughter's come all the way through. I've lived here in town. I've graduated in town, as three of my colleagues have. We have seen impacts from Brenda, and people like Brenda forever. The principal, whose name's on the floor, Tony Romano. Bobby Irwin, who's the football. These were all community people that loved Tucksbury. I was really surprised when we went to our site visits and learned three of those four school districts, union mediation, three of those four school districts, personnel issues, three or four of those districts, actually all of the districts, working on trying to reverse the effects of the pandemic and the losses that we've seen academically and socially throughout the entire school district, whether, it doesn't matter what it is. At this point in time, I agree with my colleague, Brenda Regan, in my mind, has deserved the opportunity, and I couldn't agree with you more, to do a two-year contract, to give her an opportunity, and we are also going to talk about the feedback we've got. It's pretty obvious people aren't happy with professional development. I'm going to assure everyone here that we have heard that loud and clear, and the five of us are going to work towards that. Obviously, we're going to need collaboration. We're going to need people to buy in. When we did get the union contracts settled, it was important for everyone on the committee to just put that down and go forward. Brenda Regan was the first person that I had a conversation with. Brenda, can we start the process to get him paid as soon as possible? I don't want to wait till the next meeting. We have a special meeting. Keith, I'll have it done tomorrow. I have a unique and different lens from my colleagues because of where I've sat for two, two and a half years, and I've seen the work firsthand that was always going on. I could go on and on. All of these candidates put kids first. They really do, and they're four wonderful candidates. And I felt pretty strongly about another gentleman that, quite honestly, that lives here in town. I think those are, I think you get a little bit more with those candidates, but I just see Brenda is so much, you know, she's different. As Mr. Parsons said, there's things that, you know, she needs to work on. We acknowledge that, and, you know, we're going to give her the help and support. You know, as I said, you know, there's things that I have the ability to look back on now and say, well, man, maybe I could have been a little more supportive at this time to help whoever it is. Former Mr. Malone, Mrs. Regan, Gail Johnson's probably the worst recipient of it, the stuff that I used to dump on her last minute. But she's never shied away. She never said no talking about Mrs. Regan. So with that, I would also like to say that I certainly would recommend Mrs. Regan as the next superintendent of Tucksbury Public Schools. With that, I'll say thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So I, there's been a lot said, like a lot said. So I'm not sure I need to say a lot more, but what I will say, because at this time we do have three votes, which we will take a formal vote from Mrs. Regan, but my decision and my choice was for Mrs. Regan as well, and just a few reasons I'd like to share. Because this was a hard decision, and like my colleagues have said, it weighs heavy. We met some fantastic people, some really fantastic people, and people I still want in our district, so we've got to find a way to get them here because they're really great. But I do believe that Mrs. Regan is the right candidate for our district right now. I think I'm impressed with her ability, her capacity to execute so many tasks simultaneously and flawlessly. Her dedication to our district and to our community is unmatched. She's a committed educational leader. We heard from stakeholders in the district that support her, talking about ways to improve herself and our district. She's self-reflective, and I believe has student success and achievement as her focus. I believe Ms. Regan will work to rebuild relationships, and she will start building new history and do the work of responsive listening. I believe she'll engage with families, the community, and the staff. Her ideas that she presented in her draft entry impressed me in that she is listening to our teachers, to the feedback in our survey, and has the intentions and plans on how to act on those concerns. I also believe that she has a vision and a focus, and will work with the next assistant superintendent to execute teaching and learning, professional development, as my colleague mentions here, and workshops that our teachers are seeking. I believe with the chance and the opportunity, she will be the leader that we need in the Tucksbury Schools. So that said, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say one thing really quickly. I just want to credit this process because this is a hard process, and I don't know what people know about the process or don't know about the process, but we don't have an opportunity to hear someone talk like that. I don't get to hear my colleagues talk about the person who they want to see lead this district in that way, and it means a lot, and it's important to have this conversation because we don't sit around and get the chance to do this. Everything has been internalized and in an effort to try to make this hard decision on our own and come up with the reasons why. And I was absolutely confused beyond a shadow of a doubt as to which direction I wanted to go with, and I would like to change my vote to make sure that we have a unanimous board when we elect our new superintendent and cast my vote for Brenda Regan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Chair, I would gladly, sorry, Mr. Russo is the longest-standing member. I would take great pleasure in this motion. I would very wholeheartedly like to make a motion to endorse Brenda Regan to be the next superintendent of Tucksbury Public Schools pending successful negotiations of a contract.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And at this time, do we have a motion for a recess?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Okay. So we'll make a recess here for 10 minutes, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. Thank you.